Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Village of Ridgewood Village Council Regular Public Meeting, November 12th, 2025. The time is now 7:31. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, the Record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by law of a schedule including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call?
Councilmember Mortimer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Perrin.
Here.
Councilmember White is not yet here. Councilmember Wintergrad.
Here.
And Mayor Vajianis is absent.
Please join us in a salute to our flag. And Councilwoman Evan White just walked in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At one time, a man named Ronald Fisher started working for the village of Ridgewood in October of 1993, and he transferred to a position, permanent position, in the solid waste department in March of 1994. He passed away on November 6th, 1995, after he was struck and fatally injured on Godwin Avenue while performing his village duties. A resident on Godwin Avenue planted a tree in Mr. Fisher's memory soon after his death, and that tree was recently audited and had to be removed by the shade tree division. It's been 30 years since Ronald passed away. A ceremony and memorial that will honor the memory of our colleague in a more permanent way is being planned for the spring of 2026 in Habernickel Park with the participation of village officials, colleagues, community members, and family if possible. Also, a plaque will be laid in the Department of Public Works in the garage with his name on it, in his memory. And we ask now for a moment of silence to remember Ronald Fisher. Thank you. His daughter Melissa is here tonight, and his wife, Amma, and we appreciate the diligence and the dedication with which Ronald served our community. Thank you for coming here tonight. And we'll let you know as soon as we know the date for planting that tree in Habernickel Park. We thank you for his service to Ridgewood. All right. And now we'll go to the next item on the agenda, number five. I move the bills, claims, and vouchers and statement of funds on hand as of October 31st, 2025 be accepted as submitted.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Mortimer.
Yes.
Perrin.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Wintergrad.
Yes.
I move that the village council minutes of September 9th, September 24th, September 20... Did I say... No. September 9th, September 24th, September 29th, and October 8th, having been reviewed by the village council and now available in the village clerk's office, be approved as submitted.
Second.
Mortimer.
Yes.
Perrin.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And Wintergrad.
Yes.
And now, is Anthony Fark here? Could you please come up and to the podium here? Do we have a mic for the podium? Mr. Fark, you're the owner of Tony's Laundermat Services at 88 North Maple Avenue. Can you tell us about your new business?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I start the business in...
Is that on?
Yeah.
There's a green light. Look at the green light at the bottom. There you are.
I start the business 12 years ago in Waldwick. I have the Tony's Laundermat in Waldwick. Then I opened the Tony's Laundermat in Ramsey, and now in Ridgewood. So this is my third location. I hope you will like it.
Okay. Well, welcome to Ridgewood. I hope your business is really well, and we're glad to have you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And now we have a proclamation regarding National Diabetes Awareness Month. So I'll ask Councilwoman Mortimer to read that proclamation.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Many people who know me know that my youngest daughter has type 1 diabetes, so this is special to me. And the thing is, this is a good thing, because like anybody who's met, especially a kid with type 1 diabetes, knows that they are warriors. And so I'm very proud of my daughter. And I'm gonna see how many meetings in a row I can get choked up. Also too, my daughter was diagnosed when she was three years old, and at that time we had people from the Ridgewood community reach out to us and help us get established and understand, because it's such a learning curve. And so I'd like to say to anybody that's watching this, if you're a newly diagnosed or have a family member that is, please reach out to me, because it is important to have community, and I'm here to help. With that said, here's the proclamation. Whereas November marks the start of a month-long series of activities aimed at raising diabetes awareness and calling for urgent action to tackle the diabetes academic end, whereas type 1 diabetes, which is also known as T1D, is an autoimmune disease which cannot be prevented or cured. It occurs when a person's pancreas stops producing insulin. Its onset is not related to diet or lifestyle, as it results in a need for insulin to survive. And whereas when you are affected with type 2 diabetes, your body does not use insulin properly, which is referred to as insulin resistance, and the recommended treatment is lifestyle changes, oral medications, and insulin. And whereas more than 38 million Americans have diabetes and nearly 3,300 are diagnosed each day, and whereas world diabetes is on Friday, November 14th, and it's led by the International Diabetes Foundation and its member associations. And whereas during Diabetes Awareness Month, we vow to combat this chronic life-threatening illness by standing with those with diabetes, honoring the professionals and advocates engaged in fighting diabetes, and working to raise awareness about type 1 and type 2 diabetes. And whereas the National Diabetes Education Program's 2025 theme is taking action to prevent diabetes-related health problems, to support this effort, the American Red Cross is offering free A1C screenings to all blood donors who haven't received their test in the past 12 months. And whereas as long as diabetes continues to burden our village, we must press on towards tomorrow's promising breakthroughs in treatment, care, and education. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the village council of the village of Ridgewood recognizes the struggles that families face and want to show its support by proclaiming November as Diabetes Awareness Month, and that this Friday, November 14th, 2025, is World's Diabetes Day. We encourage all residents of the village to join in this worthy observance. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. A bit about procedure for tonight. We have taken one matter off the agenda, and that has to do with parking on South Pleasant Avenue. Based on feedback from the community, we want to do some more discussion on that topic, and so we're going to put it off for another evening. And then also, at the last meeting, when we were discussing the proposed contract with Suburban Consulting Engineers, there would seem to be some confusion and other aspects of that conversation that prompted me to go back to two of our ordinances that govern the manner of addressing council and decorum during these proceedings. So first, in terms of the manner of addressing council, our section 3-19 in our code says in pertinent part, "No person shall address any disruptive, accusatory, or threatening remarks toward or about any member of the council or any other person, or pose a question to any specific council member." And going further, "No person shall, at any time during any of the comments from the public sessions, engage in any personally offensive, abusive, or threatening remarks to council members or any other person, whether present at the meeting or not." And as to decorum, this is section 3-20. I'm going to read the whole of this one. "Any person who shall disturb the peace of the council, make impertinent or slanderous remarks, or conduct himself in a boisterous manner while addressing the council, shall be forthwith barred by the presiding officer from further audience before the council, except that if the speaker shall submit to proper order under these rules, permission for him to continue may be granted by a majority vote of the council. The police chief shall, upon request of the chair, designate a member of the department to serve as sergeant-at-arms at council meetings. He shall carry out all orders and instructions given by the presiding officer for purpose of maintaining order and decorum at such a meeting. Therefore, if anyone speaking in this room engages in slanderous comments or attacking a council member or another person in the room, I will, as the presiding officer, ask the person to refrain from doing that. On the second offense, I will ask the person to stop, and on the third, I will ask them to sit down and stop speaking. If the person persists, I will then ask the police officer to escort that person from the courtroom." And Matt, did you want to elaborate any further on that?
Well, just to say that, you know, there was talk about your First Amendment rights when it comes to a public forum. Everybody should be aware, and I've said this before from the dais, that a council meeting is what's known as a limited public forum. And in a limited public forum, your right to speak at a council meeting is governed by the Open Public Meetings Act. But even the First Amendment has limitations on what you can say, because you can't just say anything on your mind or anything that you want. This is, and the courts have also granted councils and the public agencies, the ability to control, limit certain aspects of speech to the point so that they can conduct their meetings in a proper manner. They talk about decorum. These are all backed up by cases that have been decided by the Supreme Court, US Supreme Court. So the effort is to allow for the orderly work to be done by the council or by the presiding body that is holding the public meeting. But again, you're authorized to be here by the Open Public Meetings Act, and your ability to say what you want is limited by issues such as decorum, the proper effect on the public business, and things that have just been described by Pam in terms of her introductory remarks. So that's the only thing I can add to it.
Thank you, Matt. And then as to the substance of what we were talking about last week, whether there were wetlands or not on the Shedler property across Route 17, we did ask the Suburban Consulting Engineers to explain how this came about. So today, council received a letter from Suburban, and I'd like to read it to you all. It is addressed to Keith Kazmark. It's dated today's date, and it says, dear Mr... It's from... It's on Suburban letterhead. Dear Mr. Kazmark, the village of Ridgewood has requested a letter clarifying the isolated wetland identified by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, NJDEP, on the property located at Block 4704, lots 9, 10, 11, and 12, within the village of Ridgewood, Burton County, New Jersey. The initial application submitted by our permitting department to the NJDEP was for a presence or absence letter of interpretation, LOI, covering the entire Zabriskie Shedler property. As defined under New Jersey Administrative Code 7:7A-4.3, a presence or absence of LOI determines whether any freshwater wetlands, state open waters, or transition areas exist on a site or within a proposed disturbance area, and assigns a resource value classification to any wetlands identified. During NJDEP's field review, the department identified a single, small, isolated wetland feature on the property. This feature was not assessed as a regulated wetland during Suburban SEC... SCE, that's their abbreviation for their company, during Suburban's field assessment due to its size, location, and disturbed condition within the existing mulch. The location was next to an existing parking area and within an area of a known previous water main break. Specifically, the depression is assessed as less than 0.01 acre in area. That's a one-hundredth of an acre. It appears to have formed as a result of prior disturbance or the known water main break, and is situated on the portion of the property associated with the existing residence. It is not within the designated park area. Due to that feature's de minimis and isolated nature, no members of the Ridgewood Village Council or the town manager were informed of its presence, while Suburban corresponded with the DEP to question the findings and determine next steps forward. Given the small overall size and isolated nature of this feature, the NJDEP advised that the project would qualify under General Permit 6 (parenthesis) non-tributary wetlands[1051.83][1051.83](close parenthesis), which authorizes filing... which authorizes filling of isolated wetlands that do not provide significant ecological functions or services. Suburban anticipates proceeding in accordance with this guidance. Under NJ Administrative Code 7:7A-7.6, a General Permit 6 for the filling of isolated wetlands may be issued for wetlands that meet the following criteria. The wetland has no hydrologic connection (parenth-- overland or via pipe, close parenth) to any state open water or other wetland, confirming that it is isolated and non-tributary. A water service pipe is not considered a hydrologic connection. Next, the wetland is less than one acre in size. The wetland is not classified as an exceptional resource value wet... as an exceptional resource value wetland, a state open water, a US EPA Environmental Protection Agency priority wetland, or part of a special aquatic site. According to the NJDEP Landscape Project Version 3.4, no state-listed threatened or endangered species or their habitats are known to exist on the property. Based on these conditions, the feature meets the criteria for authorization to fill in under General Permit 6. The NJDEP is currently awaiting Suburban's formal determination to proceed with this general permit. This decision rests, however, with the village now that Suburban has informed the administration as to the status of wetlands at the Zabriskie Shedler property. Suburban Consulting Engineering remains committed to maintaining transparency and open communication throughout this process, and welcome any questions or concerns you may have. If you have additional questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact our office. And it is signed by Robert Gregoria, the engineer and green associate for Suburban. I'd say there are a few takeaways from this. First, the village received not only the opinion of Suburban Consulting Engineering, they also had a separate engineering company, which is dealing with remediation, which also found that there are no wetlands on the Shedler property. There are two reports, one from Suburban in August of 2024, and the other one from Matrix in October of 2025. So this was the information that was provided to the village and that we had reported out at several meetings. Also, the Suburban staff corresponded via email with staff at the DEP regarding this small one-hundredth of an acre area at Shedler, and which the DEP considered to be wetlands. In speaking with the permitting experts at Suburban this week, we learned that identifying wetlands can be very subjective. It's not necessarily black and white. Also, because the DEP never issued the letter of interpretation, the village was never made aware of the correspondence between Suburban and the DEP. Last, this area, this depression that's been identified by the DEP, was man-made, likely from construction or the broken water main that Suburban mentioned. And now I'd like to ask Gabriella, could you pull up the map of the area so people can see what we're talking about? Can you pull out a little so they can... Yeah. A little... Yeah, that shows... Okay, so you have the... The house is the small shaded area along West Saddle River Road, and then you can see above that, the green square is the area that we're talking about. And next, if you could give us the photograph. That area in the foreground is what we're talking about. This is looking south. You have the berm in the background beyond the fence. So in the foreground is this area that DEP identified as wetland.
Through you, Deputy Mayor, can we just go back a slide, Cap? So just to be clear, the square is the description. It's the lighter green area to the left that actually identifies the wetland from the
Okay. So I just wanted to bring that all to your attention before public comment, and now we can go on to public comment.
All right. I always screw this up, but can you hear me now?
Yeah. Is it on?
It should be on.
I think we're hearing you now. It's a little closer.
How's this?
There you go.
There we go. My name's Jim Bosler. I'm the chairman of the Open Space Committee, and I'm here really to say thank you to the Ridgewood voters and to you as a representative for the passing of the Open Space referendum. I'd also like to thank the committees and the boards who added me to their agendas. And as an aside, as I was talking to Evan, I'm always impressed with the volunteers in Ridgewood. At these committees, you know, there was never any animosity. There was always a give and take, and their intelligence and their propensity for volunteering is incredible. And I've run into that so many times at Ridgewood. It's really tremendous. As the chairman of the Open Space Committee, I want to say and pledge to you that we will operate with three things in mind. We'll operate with the guidelines of the Open Space Ordinance. We'll operate with the recommendations from the master plan, and we'll also use from the permissible use and the grants that you can receive from the Green Acres. We have a group of four... Well, we should have four. We're down one person, but we have three people on the committee, and the two additional, Alex and Matt, have been terrific, and I want to take out praise for those two. And then as an advisory committee, because we do not have direct responsibility for the funding, and I will say we will not go gently into the night. We will continue to make our recommendations, and with the extra funding that we have, it's given us additional flexibility and the opportunity to make Ridgewood a better place. So again, thank you all.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else for public comment? You don't have to give your address, but let us know if you're a Ridgewood resident. Give us your name and whether you're a Ridgewood resident.
Good evening. I'm a Ridgewood resident. My name is Sean Sweeney. I'm also the co-president of the Hawes Elementary Home and School Association. Hawes Elementary always applauds forward-thinking students, especially the ones who originally proposed this bike lane project, which I know you took off the agenda. I apologize. We love the creativity and advocacy for safety that they demonstrated. Unfortunately, when the adults got involved in the advancing of this project, we may have overlooked some critical details. When the project was approved, was any consideration given to the fact that parking is already limited in that area? We had been told numerous times that parking restrictions would not be necessary, so this change has caught many of us by surprise. If the lane now requires eliminating parking, can you clarify how the project was presented and approved without that information? Additionally, if cars are permitted to park in or near the lane at any point, how does that enhance bicycle safety? A bike lane that is regularly blocked by vehicles or compromised by obstructions seems to counter the stated goal of improving safety. In fact, it was stated at an August 6th Public Works Session meeting that bikes that come across an obstruction like that would simply have to go around the obstruction, taking them therefore out of the bike lane. For awareness, New Jersey law generally prohibits driving or parking in a bike lane. In practice, this means vehicles will inevitably be entering and crossing the bike lane on South Pleasant, especially in a school zone with drop-offs, pickups, deliveries, turning movements, regular traffic, and yes, piles of leaves that sit there for months at a time. This raises legitimate questions about the effectiveness and safety of a painted lane in that location. On a related note, will there also be enforcement regarding leaf piles and other seasonal debris? I drove up South Pleasant to get here this evening. You cannot see the bike lane, not because of cars, because of leaves. That's just as hazardous, if not more so, than parked cars. Also, South Pleasant is not a high-volume cycling area to warrant its own bike lane. The people who are using these bike lanes or use their bicycles to get to Hawes Elementary School are seven, eight, nine, and 10-year-olds. They are not riding their bikes in the street. They are on the sidewalk where they belong. Meanwhile, parking in and around Hawes is extremely limited. I counted tonight 59 spots and two handicap spots. Two. For 250-plus families, 356 children. It's inadequate. Already, it's inadequate. By removing the parking on South Pleasant would be a detriment and an additional hardship for our families. It was mentioned that police and parking enforcement would not enforce the parking ban during large events such as graduation. Can you clarify whether that same exemption applies to the many other events hosted at Hawes, by the school, by the HSA? Will the bike lane extend all the way up to the cemetery as originally planned, and will Somerville Elementary also have to replan their pickup and drop-off points if the bike lane goes through their property?
Sean, could you wrap it up?
Yes, sorry. We all support safety, but we also need transparency, predictability, and realistic understanding of how these changes impact an already constrained school community. Any clarification you can provide would be greatly appreciated. Any clarification you can provide would be greatly appreciated. And as a type 1 diabetic, thank you for the proclamation tonight.
Good evening, I'm Pam Welch, Ridgewood resident. And I just found out about the floodwater fountain. And I just wanted more information about what's happening there. Is it just going to be three feet permanent all around the village hall? And who is the vendor that's doing the job? I would love to have that at my house. But I've already gone to engineering and they say, I can't do anything. And since I'm down by Marshall Irving, that corner flooding, I'm always worried what's happening, any building around this area. So that's my only question. I felt like the app didn't really say too much about this, and I hadn't heard about it. So I was a little bit surprised, since I'd been on the flood advisory committee one time on Zoom. So that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Anyone else in the room here before I go to remote commenters? Okay, we'll go to Denise. Go ahead, Denise. You might be on mute. Hmm.
Can we come back for her?
Yeah, let's come back to Denise a little later. Jan Phillips, you're up. You need to unmute yourself, Jan. Gabriella, can you check to see why these speakers are not able to connect with us? Denise, can you let either Denise or Jan Phillips speak? They both have hands up now. It sounds like one of them is on. Denise, can you hear us? Are you, are you on?
Is there anybody else we could try on now?
All right, let's try, Rurik is next up. Rurik Hallaby is next up. Can we try Rurik? Now, what, what's going on, Gabriella? It looks like we could hear from Denise. Denise, could you give it a whirl? We're not hearing Denise either. Not sure what the problem is. Really?
Oh, they can hear them on too.
Denise, see if you can say something so we can hear you. I think she gave up. I don't see her. Oh, well, she's further down. Sure, how about Jan Phillips? Let's try Jan Phillips. Her hand's up.
Denise, see if you can say something.
Well.
Jan? No, can't hear her either. Do you want me to go get my phone and call them? Hope that's a good idea.
Do the Paul thing?
I don't have my phone here.
I have Rurik's number. You have their numbers?
Deputy Mayor, while you're doing that, if you'd like me to respond to the two speakers in the room?
If you give the sound.
Yeah. Well, let me just see if I can pull up Denise Lima.
Gabriella, do we think it's a computer here or is it back there? Okay.
All right, Denise, I'm calling you now.
So turn off the speaker on your Zoom, Denise.
And I'm going to put her on speaker.
Hi, Dan.
Hi, Denise. So I think, can everybody in the audience hear Denise?
You have to hold it to your microphone.
Okay, Denise, say something.
Well, thanks for calling me, Pam, first of all.
Okay, yes, people in the courtroom can hear you. Go ahead, Denise.
Super. I, I'm sorry about this. I don't know why I have this problem. Denise Lima, Ridgewood resident, thank you very much for calling me, Pam. Sorry I was not at last week's tribute to Tony. I thought that was beautifully well-done. It was great to have the town key, great to watch everybody. So I just want to say thank you for that. Also, in the last week or so, the food drive for the people in town that needed it, I thought was very successful. I know we had a lot of people that were donating as well. Just a little few cleanup items for myself is that I believe that there are close to 50 village council meeting minutes that are not available between last year and this year. Hopefully either Keith or somebody can kind of speak to that. Thanks for Jim Bola for getting up about open space. Now that it's passed, I hope that we do things that are in the master plan to make the town even more beautiful. I like that. What's not in the master plan is, actually, there's specific language about no turf. So I hope Jim incorporates that as well. There was a promise a few months ago that all the major projects in town would be listed on the portal. And I noticed that that promise and those communications are not updated. So whether it be Shedler, or the water, or even the King's Pond information, everything under the project session hasn't been updated. And it would be great for residents that can attend meetings to go and look at what's happening there. So maybe just a quick update. And the last thing I'm sure everybody has seen me comment on is the PFAS in the water. There was a promise, first of all, it's been years since we've had PFAS. There was a promise that in 2026, when all the facilities got up and running, we would be done with PFAS, we've gotten grant money. Now it looks like it's pushed to 2027. And I don't see that on the agenda or on the project. So I think it would be good to get an update on that. And because we continue to have PFAS, I think it's a little misleading and a little unempathetic if we keep accepting awards or photo op for shovels and, you know, breaking the boundaries for these new facilities, when we're still kind of all suffering with PFAS and having to get either filters or, you know, reverse osmosis and spending money to avoid the PFAS. We even have fees, you know, for PFAS as well. So any updates on that would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Denise.
Thanks, Pam.
Okay. Next, I'll pick up with Jan Phillips.
It's nice, Deputy Mayor, that you have most of the Ridgewood residents.
Yeah, I just happen to have these people's number. Do you need it? Yes, I put you on speakerphone.
I put you on speakerphone. Wonderful. Jan Phillips, Union Street resident.
Go ahead.
I want to thank you for being a constant, whether it's Access Weekend, Pride Saturday, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day Monday, or most recently, Sunday evenings, Village Thanksgiving Day Fair, or seniors. Thank you, studying presence, remind us of what true public service looks like. Right now, we live among hungry neighbors, Ryan White recipients on the verge of losing health care and housing, and seniors who face eviction because of a messy apartment or a cell phone used at the wrong place or maybe the wrong time. These are our neighbors. They depend on compassion, not convenience. They remind us of what presence matters, while anonymous posters post alternative facts, steer fear, and will some of our neighbors, overgrown of oats, plant signs that warn about the overdevelopment in our village. I am proud and grateful for each one of you council members and to you, Keith. Your walk is with grace, humility, and a commitment to community. I thank each, every one of you for reminding us that leadership is not about privilege, but it's about service. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Now, is Rurik available on our system?
Hi, Pat.
Hi, Rurik.
Hi, Rurik. Yes.
We'll take your comment now.
Tell him to turn off. You got to mute your computer, Rurik.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Just one second, I need to mute the.
You're good on our end.
Maybe walk away from your.
Yeah, I've left the Zoom, I'll get back on. But anyway, Rurik Hallaby, Ridgewood resident. Last Wednesday's meeting was a tale of two cities. It was the best of times, it was the worst of times. It started out with the wonderful accolades to Tony Damiano, who has done so much for our village over the years. Yes, Tony Damiano, who is best described as Mr. Muth. Regretfully, the meeting ended up with the worst of Ridgewood. So, so sad. Keith, for every insult that is hurled at you, there are a thousand residents who stand in awe of you as a person of high integrity and who stand in awe of what you have accomplished in the past two years. Keith, thank you. Thank you, thank you. I'll hang up.
Thank you, Rurik. Next up, we have Janet Riley. I do not have her phone number. Janet, can you, okay.
She just wanted to give her phone. You could put your phone number in the group chat and we could access her that way if Janet Riley does that, rather than you give your number out to the whole public.
Yeah, I don't know if she wants to share it with everyone.
Right.
If Janet Riley could put her phone number in the group chat, Deputy Mayor, parent, we'll add you to her address book.
And apologies to everyone who's online. Obviously, the circling here is on our part, and we apologize for that. You got it? You got her number?
I got her number.
Can we borrow your phone?
If you want to just hold it up to the microphone, Sean, so you don't have to get up your phone.
Yeah, you can do it from there. High-tech stuff.
I'll go back there after this.
Okay.
Hi.
Janet, you're on speakerphone with the village council.
Hi, thanks so much.
Turn your speakerphone.
I did turn it, I turned off my computer. This is just my, I'll try to, is this better? No. Okay. Um, which one? I'm sorry, my husband's helping. Turn something off here. Just one comment, the group chat does not work. It's disabled. So I can't put my phone over there. But thank you, Sean, for giving them my number.
You're on my phone, so your discretion is safe.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thanks. And, sorry, I have to collect my thoughts. I see that you moved the agenda item for the bike lane. So I hope that means it's not being decided on yet, and if so, I appreciate that. I was just calling to follow up on my comments from last week. As Sean said, I really applaud, you know, the activism of the students who took this initiative. But looking at the proposal that was submitted by them, it didn't say that the parking wouldn't be allowed in the bike lane. So it seems that, I know it's been mentioned at the council meeting that it did, you know, it was cleared with the BOE and stuff. But I'd like to know, you know, what point it was decided that there would be no parking allowed in the bike lane? Because there certainly was never any outreach to the residents. Not one resident was ever informed or consulted about this. And so I really urge you to reconsider. As I've mentioned before, most of those houses don't have a space to turn around in their driveway. You know, the parking on that street is very important to the residents. My, you know, my parents live in another part of Ridgewood where you're discussing your pride-in-place, you know, the new regulation there. And they were just part of a meeting, you know, neighborhood meeting with the, I think, the police and the council. And so there seems to be outreach done in other parts of the, you know, town, and it wasn't done in this part of town. And so I'd really like you to reconsider. I also went back to that October 22nd meeting to see when it was discussed. And there were some things that were mentioned that aren't correct. We can't just park in the back parking lot at Hawes. That is used for pickup and drop-off, and it's a continual line of moving cars. It is completely unsafe, and there's no room for students to walk out to a car in the parking lot. That would not be a safe thing for them to do. So we rely on parking on that South Pleasant street. As I mentioned, my concern especially is that if you start taking parking from there, people will go into the surrounding streets, which are not equipped to handle that kind of traffic. They're windy, the lawns are like windy and narrow. And if you have cars parked on both sides of like my street on George Esther, it creates visibility problems. There's a middle school bus that drops off right at the corner there. So I don't want children getting off the bus and having to dart between cars. It was also mentioned in the October 22nd meeting that residents could just park on the other side of the street. There's a good stretch of South Pleasant across from the bike lane that does not allow parking. So that's just not possible. Again, you know, the proposal showed that this bike lane was going to go all the way to Vallow Cemetery. And so I ask, like Sean did, does this mean that Somerville parents are also not going to be able to park, you know, for pickup and drop-off in front of Somerville? If it's not being extended, then it just seems like, you know, it's completely useless. In general, bike lanes aren't needed in residential areas. You know, like this was already mentioned, our kids are biking on the sidewalk where they belong. And I think those are all my points. But just, I really, you know, I would just urge you to rethink this. I know it was part of the grant, it seems, that you received $270,000 on this, you know, DOT grant. So I don't, I'd just like to hear what can be done. Like, I don't know if it involves giving part of this money back or whatever. But it really, despite the fact that it was a well-intentioned proposal.
Janet, could you please wrap it up?
Yeah, sure. It really seems very unfair to the residents and to this community to do this without any, you know, thought or really extensive research put into the impact that it has. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Okay, I don't see anyone else on remote, and therefore I'm going to ask if anybody on the dais wants to respond.
Close it first.
I'm going to close public comment and ask if anybody on the dais would like to respond.
I have a few comments. I have a few comments. First of all, to both Sean and Janet, we hear you. Just to give a little history on this South Pleasant Street project, this was a grant that was applied for back in 2023, I believe. I can't speak to the public outreach that occurred when the grant was prepared. I don't know if there was some, I don't know if there was any, but I can tell you that, you know, the evolution of this has obviously brought these concerns to the forefront. I had a long conversation yesterday with the deputy mayor, in light of the mayor being out of the country, and we made the decision to take it off tonight's agenda in response to the residents' concerns. There are a few factors that are involved here. We've already made contact with the NJDOT who granted us this money to do this project. We have to really do a thorough assessment with them of how the grant would be impacted if we eliminated the bike lane. We also need to have conversation with the police department and with the engineering division, which we are slated to do at our next ordinance working group meeting, which the mayor and the deputy mayor both sit on that committee. So we will have more on this in December, but I can assure you that right now, it is not moving forward until we have further discussion. So I hope that that helps in that regard. To Pam, there is nothing being constructed here at Village Hall. We have had flood dams that have protected the first level of this building at each of the entryways, all the way around the perimeter of the building. Those flood dams are being replaced. I want to say it was approved in the spring. I know a resident reached out to me and asked me specifically what the dates were, but it was discussed at a work session, it was approved at a public meeting by resolution. It's, these flood dams, the flood dams that we had were outdated, they were worn out, they were used even when it didn't flood as a precautionary measure. These new flood dams are state-of-the-art technology, and they're being installed this week and next week, so that we do have flood protection moving forward. With regard to flood dams at your residence, I would re-inquire about that, and I only say that because we actually referred some residents during the three successive flood events we had when I first arrived here at Ridgewood, to a flood dam company, and I know that at least one, if not more, residents who live along the Saddle River have outfitted their homes and their garage entrances with these types of flood dams. So if you want to reach out to me, I can find out who the vendor was, both past and present. There may be a vendor who's more specific to residential flood dams, but we can certainly have that conversation if you want to reach out, because we did share that information with residents back in 2023. To Denise, I unfortunately, because I went to talk to Gabriella, I didn't hear all of your comments tonight, so I apologize for that, but I can tell you that with regard to the projects being posted to the website, all of the Shedler documents are there, as long as they are not deliberative. Right now, we're planning to post the soil mitigation plan as soon as we hear back from the DEP, which we're hopeful that will be tomorrow, and all of the PFAS status information is up on the Ridgewood Water website. As a matter of fact, if you go to the Ridgewood Water website, there is a specific page that takes you through all of the construction projects relative to the PFAS build-out. The tab is called PFAS Treatment Construction Update. And with regard to the timeframe of completing the PFAS projects in total, we have a consent order that is signed with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to have that work effort complete by the end of 2026. That consent order still stands. However, the same New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection required us to do a cultural resource study at the Cedar Hill location. That was the bid award that was made at last week's council meeting, so the bid has been awarded for that. However, because there was an archaeological study that was required and some significant cultural awareness issues that needed to be undertaken with the DEP, that has put that project behind. So tentatively, contingent upon how quickly the contractor can work and get all the necessary materials and equipment and perform the construction, there is a chance that that may run into the first quarter of 2027. That is not something that was in the control of the village, that is something that was mandated by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, but every other PFAS facility is slated to be completed in 2026. And I think that's all I had, Deputy Mayor.
Keith, I just want to thank you on the, on the pleasant, on the Hawes issue. I know I was contacted by some folks, appreciate the thoughtfulness. I think the ground process was great, but clearly we've got some more consideration to do, and very much appreciate you pulling it off, and want to make sure, as I know you will, obviously we have ongoing discussions with the folks who are most affected by it, and we figure out the best way forward, but appreciate you pushing ahead on that.
And it should also be noted that I received a phone call from Dr. Schwartz this morning on this issue as well, and he and I are meeting on Friday to discuss how it affects the Hawes School specifically.
That's great.
Anyone else? All right, we're going on to item nine in the agenda. This has to do with the budget for the Ridgewood Business Alliance. Will the village clerk please read the 2026 Ridgewood Business Alliance budget?
This is the 2026 Ridgewood Business Alliance budget, that's the title.
Oh, okay. The public hearing on the 2026 Ridgewood Business Alliance budget is now open.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Robin Goldfisher, and I'm the Senior Vice President and General Counsel for the Valley Health System. I want to acknowledge the village's goal of supporting the Ridgewood business community and enhancing the vitality of the downtown area. The hospital has been a proud member of this community for decades and contributing to its economy, public health, and the quality of life.
Can you pull the mic a little bit closer?
We value our longstanding partnership with the village and with its many small businesses that make Ridgewood unique. I must, however, express significant concern regarding the application of the Special Improvement District Assessment under the Ridgewood Business Alliance ordinance. We've compared a list of a few Ridgewood nonprofit entities to the property assessment rule provided by the village and didn't see any other than the hospital not-for-profits assessed under this special improvement ordinance. This creates the appearance of selective enforcement and raises both fairness and legal compliance issues under New Jersey law. The state of New Jersey authorizes municipalities to create special improvement districts under the Pedestrian Mall and Special Improvement District Act. This law allows local governments to impose special assessments only on properties that are specifically benefited by the improvements financed through those assessments. Importantly, the statute provides that a governing body may exempt properties that, in its opinion, do not benefit from the improvements. This is not only a discretionary option, it's a recognition of the principle that special assessments must be tied to specific benefits. Given the Valley Hospital's operations are medical and charitable in nature, not commercial or retail, it's difficult to see how the hospital will receive any special benefit from downtown marketing or business promotion activities. As such, applying the assessment to Valley appears inconsistent with both the statute's language and the statute's intent. The New Jersey Constitution mandates uniform treatment of properties within the same class, and both the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment and the New Jersey Constitution prohibit arbitrary or selective application of government burdens. By imposing a levy on some nonprofits while excluding others, the village risks violating these uniformity principles. Courts have consistently ruled that government assessments must be rationally related to the benefits conferred and applied consistently to all similarly situated properties. Taken together, selective or inconsistent enforcement or application as to nonprofits, particularly in this instance, where we receive no special benefit, is contrary to both the statute and the case law. Accordingly, we request that the village council, number one, clarify the criteria used to determine which entities are included and which are exempted from this assessment. Number two, review the ordinance...
Ms. Goldfisher, you'll need to wrap it up pretty soon.
I'm almost done. Review the ordinance's application to ensure that all similarly situated nonprofit organizations are treated the same, and suspend or defer the assessment as to Valley pending that review. We remain committed as a hospital to being engaged and a constructive partner in Ridgewood's economic and civic life, and partnership depends on fairness, transparency, and adherence to the rule of law. We believe it's both reasonable and responsible for the village to revisit the issue, to ensure compliance with the state statute, and equal treatment for all. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Goldfisher. Any other persons who wish to be heard? We have here several of the directors from the Ridgewood Business Alliance. Would any of them care to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Glenn Carlo. I am the president of the Board of Directors of the Ridgewood Business Alliance. Very nice to meet you, by the way. I believe there, correct me if I'm wrong, is there a current litigation between the hospital and the village as to tax status?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, actually, actually, we can't get into that litigation.
Don't ask questions, just give your statement if you want.
Okay.
Wait, can I just also procedurally, should we start the clock or...
Oh, yeah.
Just...
Understood.
Don't ask questions of the public, just give your comments.
Understood, understood. So we are aware that there is, we're under the impression that there is a litigation in process, and I would simply say that the Ridgewood Business Alliance supports the hospital's ability to request a review on part of the village council, and we have no objection to that.
Thank you.
No.
All right. Any other commenters or speakers? Okay.
Oh, I got one.
Oh, oh. There you go.
Gee, Glenn, I didn't know you were that tall.
Good evening, council members and audience. I am, my name is Stuart Copperway. I am the president of Economic Development Strategist, the consultant who brought about the improvement district with everybody, and I just wanted to say that it's now two years, this is the culmination of two years of work that was being performed by a variety of different individuals. Glenn Carlo, Tom Hillman, Nina Milano's, Deputy Mayor Perron, Angela Cortullo, Bill Gilson, Joan Groom, Gary Colossari, Lisa Plasse, Ron Rosenzweig, John Saraceno, Stacy Sisparis, and Mayor Fagianos, as well as Catherine Schmidt. These people worked diligently over the last two years to put together the improvement district, the ordinance that was approved, and also the budget that you stand before you, now that being for the public hearing. And in response to other not-for-profits, I know that there were basically, I think, twenty-two, let's see, twenty-nine, that's twenty-nine, forty-nine different, I don't know about not-for-profit, but certainly tax-exempt status properties that are within the district, and of those, there were one, two, three, four, five, six properties that was, decided to be included within the district for the improvement district, for the Ridgewood Business Alliance. I want to thank, again, thank you for all the time. I want to thank the staff. I would like to thank the council for all the work that they have done. As far as the, the specific benefits, I would say the point-blank that obviously, if anybody wants to challenge the improvement district ordinance and be exempt from it, they need to do so by asking the council to exempt them, but basically that would have to be to reopen Schedule A and also redistrict the map of the improvement district at the same time. We do believe that the, the hospital is involved with a variety of for-profit entity organizational structures, and consequently, that was the decision by the board to include them in the assessment. Thank you very much. I thank you again for all the time and that I spent here with you, and for the board members to be involved. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank Stuart Copperway for his guidance here, and the budget itself is thoughtful and, and helps us get the business community to an enhanced position, and the deliverables are there in the budget, and we appreciate all his service over these many months.
Are we closing?
If I may just correct one, you know, your statement? We are not a for-profit, we are a not-for-profit, and there is no for-profit work going on on that campus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that the public hearing on the 2026 Ridgewood Business Alliance budget be closed.
I second that.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Winogrand? Yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the resolution?
Yes, please.
Whereas the Ridgewood Business Alliance, Inc., the district management corporation for Ridgewood Special Improvement District, submitted its first annual budget to the village council of Village of Ridgewood in accordance with NJSA 40:56-84. Whereas officers of the Ridgewood Business Alliance, Inc., presented their 2026 budget to the village council at a regularly scheduled work session on September 24, 2025, to explain how the 2026 budget contributes to the Ridgewood Business Alliance, Inc.'s goals and objectives. Whereas the village council of Village of Ridgewood adopted Resolution Number 25-412 on October 8, 2025, which introduced and approved the 2026 budget of the Ridgewood Business Alliance, Inc., and set November 12, 2025, as a date for the public hearing on the budget. Whereas the budget for the Ridgewood Business Alliance, Inc., as well as the date, time, and place of the public hearing, was advertised in the Ridgewood News and notification of the public hearing on the 2026 budget, and a link to the assessment rule was sent by U.S. Mail to all property owners in Ridgewood who will pay an assessment to the Ridgewood Business Alliance, Inc. Whereas the public hearing on the 2026 budget for the Ridgewood Business Alliance, Inc., has now been held, and therefore be it resolved by the village council of the Village of Ridgewood that the 2026 budget for the Ridgewood Business Alliance, Inc., be and is hereby adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Mortimer?
So as many people know, that I've been very involved and asked a lot of questions. I do appreciate all of Stuart's answers, and since when we voted on this, there's been additional movement within the board, and so because I'm seeing them continue to move to where it needs to be, then I'm going to vote yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
White?
So I have a message here from Paul that he asked me to read, and then I'm just going to comment myself. So this one is from Paul. "I've worked in Ridgewood Central Business District for about thirty years. Along with our nationally-ranked schools and beautiful tree-lined neighborhoods, it is one of the crown jewels of our village. Through the years, I've watched and felt firsthand how the peaks and valleys of the changing economy have impacted our downtown shopping and dining community. As we have all seen, however, today's business climate is changing faster than ever, and while a city is by no means a panacea, it will provide us with the tool and resources necessary to better compete in this ever-changing landscape. Consequently, I wholeheartedly support the establishment of a special improvement district in Ridgewood, and want to take this moment to personally thank Deputy Mayor Pam Perrin for her efforts and vision in bringing this much-needed resource for our village. For me personally, I too want to thank my friend Pam." For me personally, I too want to thank my friend Pam. I think this is a wonderful thing. It is not perfect, and I'm sure it will evolve and we'll figure out ways to make it better, and certainly, Ms. Goldfisher, we hear you. But sir, I'm prepared to vote yes tonight because I think it's a great thing on balance, and I look forward to seeing all the great things that you're going to do with this new endeavor."
And Winograd?
Sure, so I too want to thank Pam, the committee, and all the business owners because you make Ridgewood truly great. I'm so grateful for you outside of this and then inside of it as well. I'm also very much looking forward to partnering with beautification and adding more lights, more flowers, and more beautiful elements to our main street, so congratulations, Pam. Congratulations to the Ridgewood Business Alliance, and I vote yes.
All right, we will go on to the village manager's report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First, I want to start tonight by thanking Sean Hamlin, our supervisor of sanitation and recycling, and Rich Calby, our director of operations, for their efforts in acknowledging Ronald Fisher, someone who worked for the village thirty years ago and who really gave their life for the village in service to our residents. So, we certainly look forward to honoring Ronald further next spring and acknowledging the sacrifice he made here in the village of Ridgewood. I also want to thank the American Legion Post 53 and all who participated and attended yesterday's Veterans Day service in Van Ness Square. While in many communities, services like this have dwindled or stopped completely, Ridgewood does it right, with many residents attending to honor our veterans. Coming from a Gold Star family myself, it's meaningful and much appreciated. On Monday, construction began on the new flood barrier system here at Village Hall. The project is expected to take three weeks, with the majority of work occurring this week. Both the main entrance and the community center entrance will be impacted. However, one entrance will be closed at a time, so residents, employees, and customers can continue to access the building throughout the duration of the project. And just to be clear, these gates are in front of each door at the ground level, as I previously stated to Pam. There is no concrete wall being installed around Village Hall. I'm also pleased to announce that the Ridgewood Police Department, Central Dispatch, and my office have been working collectively together to create an online parking request portal, which is scheduled to formally launch on December 1st. We did a trial run last week, and we have a few changes to make, but we are confident that this will make notification to Central Dispatch for overnight parking easier and more convenient for our residents, rather than having to call in each night, so we are looking forward to that. On November 6, the new bus shelter in front of Ridgewood High School on East Ridgewood Avenue finally arrived. I want to acknowledge the Engineering Division, the Signal Division, and New Jersey Transit for their partnership in this project. While it took a while, this new shelter will provide cover from inclement weather and a safe place for riders, especially our students. Our vendor, Audio Directions, will be installing a hearing loop here in the courtroom this Friday, November 14. You may recall that we received a state grant to install this technology, which allows people with hearing loss to clear sound regardless of background noise or distance. Also, this Friday, November 14, at 3:30 p.m., we invite all Ridgewood residents to attend the grand reopening of the new ADA playground at Habernicle Park. This upgraded playground, which is designed to be accessible for all children, was partially funded through a $68,000 State Department of Community Affairs grant pursued by our Parks and Recreation Department. I'm also pleased to report that the Upper Hawes Baseball Field upgrades, which were made over the NJEA Teachers Convention break, are now complete. Again, a big thank you to the Ridgewood Baseball and Softball Association for their generous donation and investment into this field, and to our Parks and Recreation Department, the Ridgewood Public Schools, and New Jersey Sports Fields for working together to get this done. Tomorrow night, we will hold a community meeting on the Zabriski Sheddler Property Soil Remediation Plan. Matrix New World Engineering will present the details of the soil remediation plan for the Zabriski Sheddler property to the community. A plan has been submitted to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and representatives from Matrix will be available to answer questions from the public. The meeting begins at 6:30 p.m. in the youth lounge on Level 1 of this building. Residents may also participate via Zoom. This past Sunday was the first time I had the opportunity to attend the Ridgewood Elder Dinner, and it was simply an amazing event. Sincere thanks to our Parks and Recreation Department, the Community Center Foundation, the Health Barn USA, Age Friendly Ridgewood, the Civic Youth Corps, the Scout Troops, and all the talented students from Ridgewood High School who shared their vocal talents, all the volunteers and the Kapoor family. It was truly a coming together to show our thanks for our senior residents. This award-winning event is something special in the village, and for that, we should all be thankful. As we discussed at the October 29 Village Council meeting, the village has entered into an agreement to offer the Difference Card, along with the state health benefits high-deductible plan to cover out-of-pocket expenses for our employees' health benefits. This change was elected for all employees eligible and would provide a significant savings to both the village and the employees, especially in light of the pending 36.5% increase in insurance premiums, which goes into effect on the state health benefits plan effective January 1. With that, we received a report today indicating that 176 employees have moved from the traditional plans to the high-deductible plan and will be able to take advantage of the Difference Card. Just under 100 employees chose to stay on the plans that they have today. Finance is working on the savings calculations as it relates to the impact on the 2026 municipal budget. On tonight's agenda is the salary ordinance setting the PBA and PBA SOA for 2026 through 2029. We have a memorandum of agreement outlining the agreed-upon items for this new contract. Salary adjustments will be set at 1.5 in 2026, 2.5 in 2027, 1.75 in 2028, and 2.5 in 2029. We also negotiated changes to comp time banks, healthcare benefits as it relates to the high-deductible plan as just mentioned, and cleaned up language to bring the contract up to date. I want to thank the PBA and the SOA Negotiations Committee, led by Kyle Montan and Jay Chuck, for their efforts in coming to an agreement that both benefits our police officers and the taxpayers of Ridgewood. I am also pleased that we were able to come to terms on the new contract prior to the existing contract expiring. With the suspension of SNAP benefits on October 31, the village partnered with the Social Services Association, the Public Library, the YMCA, and multiple churches, and the Ridgewood Public Schools to collect donations for families impacted. I am super proud of the community coming together and donating hundreds of bags of food and toiletries. Thank you, Ridgewood, for your generosity and care. Social Services will now transition to the annual Thanksgiving Food Drive, which benefits more than 100 local families. Just a few announcements tonight. The 1 Million Minutes of Wellness Challenge has now hit over 500,000 minutes logged. This 12-week challenge is a cornerstone of the 2025 Mayor's Wellness Campaign. The challenge is open to anyone who lives, works, or participates in programs and services here in Ridgewood, and we encourage you to simply go on and log your minutes between now and December 5 on the Wellness Challenge webpage on the village site. Leaf season began back in October. Please keep checking the mailer that was received at all residential households. It's also posted on the village website. Please remember that those dates that are listed are placement dates; they are not the dates that the leaves will be collected. The next Bergen County Utilities Authority Household Hazardous Waste Event will be held on Saturday, November 15, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Bergen County Utilities Authority in Moonaki. Residents must stay in their vehicles at all times, and staff will remove the materials from your vehicle. Village Hall and all Village of Ridgewood offices will be closed on Thursday, November 27, and Friday, November 28, in observance of Thanksgiving. The Recycling Center will be open from 8:00 a.m. till noon on Friday, November 29. The East Side Rear Yard Garbage Pickup and Area Number 8 Recycling will be picked up as well. The 40th Annual Downtown for the Holidays and Tree Lighting will take place on Friday, November 5, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. along East Ridgewood Avenue. The Chamber of Commerce will have a touch-a-truck, trackless train, Nutcracker dancers in store windows, and Santa in his moving golf cart. There will also be smores in Van Ness Square. Contact the Ridgewood Chamber of Commerce for more details. And finally, the village council upcoming meetings are December 3, a work session; December 10, a public meeting. Both start at 7:30 p.m. And finally, as this is our last meeting in November, I just want to wish everyone a happy and healthy Thanksgiving holiday. And that concludes my report, Deputy Mayor.
We'll go on to council reports. Thank you. Frank?
Thanks. The Ridgewood Arts Council met on Monday, and so on November 20, which is next Thursday, that we're having a Jazz Coffee House at the Sugar &amp; Spice. This is a free event where you can go in, listen to some tunes, have some great snacks, and so I would encourage everybody to head down to Sugar &amp; Spice next Thursday, November 20, and it starts at 7:00 p.m. Also, as Keith mentioned, Downtown for the Holidays, and what the Ridgewood Arts Council is doing is that they're already gearing up to get the businesses to do the holiday window displays, and then that'll also be judged before the tree lighting. And Open Space meets tomorrow, and I think we're going to be celebrating something. So, that's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Winograd?
Sure. So, I too want to say thank you to the Elder Dinner, which occurred on Sunday. I was a member of the original inception team, and about 10 years ago, I received a phone call seeing if my middle school students would wish to be involved. If you've never attended, it's a lovely event. It underscores, for senior citizens, worthwarding hunger and also loneliness. It's a chance to build community, and I want to thank our partners at Health Barn and the Old Paramus Church, Age Friendly, and everybody who made it happen. I especially want to thank the Kapoor family, who donates the meal. About nine years ago, their father-in-law passed away, and they wanted to see their volunteer dollars in action, and their boys have grown up. One of them is now officially taller than everybody in Ridgewood, and this model has gone as far as, it was adopted in Glen Rock this year, and Fair Lawn has reached out. So, thank you to everybody who makes these beautiful events happen, especially from the council who showed up. I know Keith and his wife were servers, and Pam was working extra hard as well, so thank you for being there. Last night, we met with Shade Tree. It was a very productive meeting. I want to again mention that our school for next year for adoptive sapling will be the Ridge School. This is great, so we're looking forward to partnering with Ridge, and if you have any friends there that are interested in saplings, start talking them up now. We're also continuing our ongoing program of creating an awareness of what ivy can do to a viable tree, and we're pleased to announce that our search for additional large trees and potentially Liberty Trees, which is a tree that's over 250 years old and could possibly be honored by the state of New Jersey during our 250th, have been identified. So, stay tuned for that, and thank you to Shade Tree for all of their hard work. I too attended the Veterans Day Celebration or Memorial at the park, and I want to thank the American Legion, Sally Ann, and the Speaker, Bill Golden, who was a Ridgewood resident, is a Ridgewood resident. I want to say, you know, yesterday was a bitterly cold day. As the lead speaker said, it was a Soldier's Day. Mind you how lucky you are that we're celebrating our holidays in a home with food and with family, and so many people are deployed, and their families are home serving in their own way, raising children alone. It was truly beautiful, and I'm grateful each and every day for those who have kept our country safe. On a more personal note, I want to thank and wish my father and my brother, who are both Ridgewood residents, a happy Veterans Day. My brother was in the U.S. Navy, and my father was a Marine. Tonight, we had access, the dinner at Stella. We had a little shift in plans, and it was very well-attended. The fire department was there. I want to thank Jamie Davis and Jesse Schwartzman for another successful dinner. I also want to remind everybody that the Silent Christmas Tree Lighting, which is an event that occurs the Monday after the Christmas Tree Lighting with very little stimulation. If you're neurodivergent, attending a parade, attending a celebration is very hard, so for those families, often siblings sit out. The entire access committee is excited that this event will occur. It'll be at the Ridgewood Station this year, and please join us if you've never been a part of it. It's a truly beautiful event. And we also want to, from the access community who wrote dozens of letters for the ADA compliance and improvements at Habernicle, we all plan on being at the ribbon cutting on Friday, so please join us 3:30 at Habernicle. And lastly, as Keith mentioned, I want to wish everybody a happy and healthy Thanksgiving, and I want to say how thankful I am to live in Ridgewood, to serve on this council, to work with such smart, thoughtful, kind people. So, whatever you're doing to you and your family, I'm thankful to be a small part of this community, and I wish you all the best.
Evan?
Thanks so much. I will be brief. HBC Historical Preservation Committee met earlier this week, had five applications. I remain thankful to all the folks in the HBC for their guidance in protecting the integrity of our community. Want to echo Siobhan's comments as well as everyone else. All the council members attended the Veterans Day presentation at Van Ness Square. It was uniquely, uniquely, uniquely well-done. The lead speaker, Bill Golden, was incredibly moving, and the Legionnaires have always put on a remarkably great event and something worthy of our veterans, so I want to thank the Legionnaires as well. And as everyone else, just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I look forward to seeing you all in December.
Thanks, Evan. I too attended the Veterans Day ceremony. It was very inspirational. Our speaker spoke about, "Don't allow fear to command your actions. Don't let fear get in the way of your accomplishing what you dreamed to accomplish," and I really appreciated that. Green Ridgewood met last week. Our subcommittees all reported in on finances, grant applications, student events like pumpkin smashing, which the students are staging this weekend. And, oh, I'll reiterate what our sanitation director said, "Don't put pumpkins in the street. Don't cover them up with leaves. They are very dangerous when they rot and they become slippery." The Elder Dinner was really, we get more and more people every year coming to this event, and it's just so much fun. I meet so many new people, and I also wanted to thank Old Paramus Reform Church for bringing people together and hosting this event. They have been doing that for 300 years, and this is their 300th anniversary, and to celebrate, this Saturday at 7:00 o'clock, there's going to be a benefit concert at the church, which will be put on by Engel Winds. It should be mostly classical music, and I intend to attend, and I hope many of you will as well. The Ridgewood Arts Foundation continues to meet to draft the grant application and hopefully win the EDA grant from the state of New Jersey to refurbish the Warner Theater into a performing arts center. The Central Business District Committee meets tomorrow morning via Zoom at 8:30. The link is on our agenda, and the agenda is posted on the village website. Downtown for the Holidays, I did want to mention that Santa and Mrs. Claus will be welcoming families a little earlier than the rest of the program at 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock. They will be greeting families at the other end of Ridgewood Avenue. It won't be as crowded, so it should be a little more relaxed. And that's all I have. I'll wish everybody a great Thanksgiving with family and friends, and we'll go on to Ridgewood Water. There are no ordinances for introduction or public hearing, so we will go on to our consent agenda. That's item 13 on the agenda.
So, the following resolutions, Number 25-423 through 25-438, will be adopted by a consent agenda, as won by the village council. It will be read by title only. Award contract, purchase of fiber cable for Wykoff-Beldau project. Award contract, construction of Cedar Hill PFOs Treatment Facility. Award contract under New Jersey State Contract, 2026 Ford F-350 Supercab. Award contract under Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing, tow behind air compressor. Award contract under Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing, mobile light tower. Award contract under Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing, lock behind trench roller. Or professional services contract, public policy consulting. Award professional services contract, budget model review. Authorized change order, security improvements at various water facilities. Authorized change order, concrete pavement and sidewalk restoration. Authorized change order, asphalt trench patching. Authorized change order, East Side Water Main Replacement Project. Project. Approval of final payment: Passaic Valley Water Commission Interconnection. Approval of final payment and closeout: East Side Water Main Replacement Project. Authorized application for grant agreement from New Jersey Department of Community Affairs: construction of PFOs Treatment Facility in Glen Rock, and declare property surplus for the Water Department. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
I move the first reading of Ordinance 4068.
A second?
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
So ordered. Will the clerk please read Ordinance 4068 by title?
An ordinance to fix salaries, wages, and other compensation of and for police officers and police superior officers of the Village of Ridgewood, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey.
I move that Ordinance 4068 be adopted on the first reading and that December 10th, 2025, be fixed as the hearing, the date for the hearing thereon.
I second the motion.
Through you, Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
This ordinance ties back to what I reported on under the manager's report with the settlement of the PBA and PBA superior officer salaries, so everything in this ordinance is tied back to the memorandum of agreement.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
I move the clerk read Ordinance 4063 by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Will the clerk please read the title of Ordinance 4063?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 265 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood Vehicles and Traffic at Section 265-65. Parking prohibited at all times.
The public hearing is now open. Seeing no one, I move that the public hearing be closed.
I second that.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
I move that Ordinance 4063 be adopted on the second reading and the final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
I move the clerk read Ordinance 4064 by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Will the clerk please read the title of Ordinance 4064?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 145 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood Fees at Section 145-6: fees related to code chapters.
The public hearing is now open. I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
I move that Ordinance 4064 be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
I move the clerk read Ordinance 4065 by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second. Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Will the clerk please read the title of Ordinance 4065?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 145 of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood Fees at Section 145-6: enumeration of fees relating to code chapters.
The public hearing is now open. I don't see anyone wishing to speak, and therefore, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
I move that Ordinance 4065 be adopted on the second reading and final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
I move the clerk read Ordinance 4066 by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Will the clerk please read the title of Ordinance 4066?
An ordinance to amend the salaries, wages, and other compensation and to establish the employee agreement of certain non-union officers and employees of the Village of Ridgewood, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey for the year 2026.
The public hearing is now open. Seeing no one wishing to speak to this issue, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
I move that Ordinance 4066 be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law. I second the motion.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
I move the clerk read Ordinance 4067 by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Will the clerk please read the title of Ordinance 4067?
An ordinance to fix salaries, wages, and other compensation of non-union employees of the Village of Ridgewood, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey for the year 2026.
The public hearing is now open. I'll just say thank you to our village manager for negotiating all these contracts. I know it was a lot of work. I don't see any other people requesting to speak, therefore, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
I move that Ordinance 4067 be adopted on second reading and the final publication as required by law. Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Well done, Frank. Yes.
The following resolutions, number 25-439 through 25-468, are to be adopted by a consent agenda with one vote by the Village Council. They will be read by title only. Award contract: transplant arborvitae at Sheddler property. Award contract: removal and replanting of memorial trees in 9/11 Memorial L.A. Award contract: professional recreational program instruction. Title 59 approval: furnishing laboratory analysis services, water pollution control facility, Lakeview compost facility, and Grayden Pool facility. Award contract: furnishing laboratory analysis services, water pollution control facility, Lakeview compost facility, and Grayden Pool facility. Award contract under Bergen County contract: removal of existing trees on site plan on north side of Sheddler property. Award contract under Bergen County contract: restoration of fire department ladder tower truck. Award professional services contract: employee assistance program. Award professional services contract: engineering permitting and bidding services, development of Sheddler Park property. Award professional services contract: geotechnical investigation in deliverables and retaining wall design and construction drawings. Award professional services contract: physician for child health clinics. Award professional services contract: public health and nursing services. Authorized shared services agreement: TV inspection of sewer mains, Northwest Bergen County Utilities Authority. Authorized shared services agreement: tax assessor services, West Milford. Authorized shared services agreement: use of styrofoam densifier Borough Fair Lawn. Authorized shared services agreement: use of styrofoam densifier Borough Ho-Hocus. Authorized shared services agreement: use of styrofoam densifier Borough Oradel. Authorized shared services agreement: use of styrofoam densifier Borough Glen Rock. Authorized shared services agreement: use of styrofoam densifier City of Garfield. Request approval to change title or text in 2025 budget, New Jersey Department of Human Services, Division of Mental Health and Addictive Services Grant. Authorized Chapter 159, 2025 Budget Amendment, Department of Human Services, Division of Mental Health and Addiction Services Grant from State of New Jersey Department of Human Services. Authorized entering into and execution of Community Development Block Grant Agreement, Carlisle Terrace Sewerage Pipe Road Improvements. Authorized application for and accept grant funding from Bergen County Municipal Alliance Grant. Authorized settlement agreement: outstanding insurance claim, the New Jersey Environmental Risk Management Fund. Authorized membership and Passaic County Cooperative Pricing System and execution of membership agreements. Accept donation: plant of pots for Central Business District. Establish 2026 dates and fees for dining corrals. Declare property surplus, Fire Department. Authorized minor encroachment agreement, 914 Elaine Terrace. Authorized planting of memorial tree and placement of memorial plaque in Department of Public Works Garage to commemorate Village employee Ronald Fisher on the 30th anniversary of his untimely passing. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mortimer?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And with that, we will go back to public comment, not to exceed three minutes.
Good evening. Bob Furman, Ridgewood resident. I just wanted to thank the council and village manager for all of the excellent work that you do for all of the village residents. You know, you could go on and on a big, long list, whether it's the improvement at Horst School Field, the Kingsbridge Lane Pedestrian Bridge, the bus station improvements at Van Ness Square, as well as the high school, the Elder Dinner, et cetera, et cetera. And in closing, I would just like to say, in confidence, based on the last few council elections, I can tell you that the silent majority in this village supports you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Good evening. Hans Tjergen Lehmann, Ridgewood resident. I had the displeasure of watching your last council meeting, especially in reference to a public comment. And just for myself personally, I wanted to thank the council, and in particular, the village manager for the good work that you're doing, and I hope to see Sheddler completed sometime before I pass from this earth. Thank you.
Thank you, Hans.
I hope we get it done well before then, Hans. It's worth it.
Boy, a loving Ridgewood taxpayer and Ridgewood resident. I've got a concern about the $79,000 expenditure for the repair of the ladder truck, the fire department tower ladder truck. I believe that that truck is probably 2012, 2013. I don't know what the repairs are that we're paying $79,000 for, but I'm just wondering if any of them should have fallen under a warranty, and for some reason, we're not able to collect money from the manufacturer. Perhaps I should just contact the fire chief and talk about this, but again, just a concern about that amount of money being spent. I know it's a lot cheaper than buying a new truck, but I'm just concerned as to whether something wore out that shouldn't have worn out, and do other taxpayers now have to spend almost $80,000 to get it straightened out? So if there could just be some follow-up, just to let me know what in particular is wrong with that truck that's going to require that amount of money to fix it, I'd appreciate it. I did not want to interrupt the public hearing. I believe it was billed as a public hearing earlier, but it's my recollection that typically at public hearings, there is no time limit imposed on speakers, and I was just curious to know why there was a three-minute time limit imposed tonight on each speaker with respect to that public hearing. As I said, it's been my experience that typically there is no time limit imposed. I don't know if this is a change, or if it was because an ordinance wasn't involved, but I'm particularly concerned that the attorney for Valley was kind of cut off at the three-minute limit when there was no announcement ahead of time that there would be a three-minute limit. As you know, typically, three-minute limits are imposed on comments, but a public hearing is not a comment. People can ask questions and comment, and it's been my experience that there's never been a time limit associated with that, and I was sort of surprised that a time limit was imposed tonight. If you have changed the policy with respect to public hearings and are now going to impose a three-minute time limit on that, I believe that should be formally announced so people know it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I'm going to close public comment.
Online?
No one.
You're going to be online?
No, there's nobody online. And I would like to respond. That was my mistake. There is no change in policy. During public hearings, people can talk as long as they need to. And indeed, the attorney for Valley Hospital did get up and speak a second time, so I don't think she was cut off in any of the things she needed to convey. With respect to the ladder truck, the things that need repair, and I'm only going to tell you some of the big ones. The heat shields are coming off and need to be replaced. The steering wheel horn button works only intermittently. The fuel tank is severely rusted, and grease fittings are missing in the yoke and the split joint, whatever that is. The cradle scuff pads are bent, and the right cradle pad is damaged. The platform waterway swivel will not take grease. And in speaking with the -- that's just a few of them. I mean, it's a long list that you can see in the sunshine binders, but in speaking with Chief John Judge, he said a new ladder truck would cost $2.1 to $2.3 million to replace with a three-to-four-year wait, and we can't wait that long for the purpose of safety, and there are no grants available. So for that reason, we are opting for this rather expensive repair.
Just to add, because I actually had a lot of the same questions you did when you met the fire chief. There's about 10 more years at least on the life of this rig, so we feel it's a worthy investment. Given that the truck is already 10 years old, I'm going to assume that there's no warranty. When we asked the chief about, you know, this level of warranty, he said it was unusual. He didn't have a great answer for it, but clearly, we need the truck. Like, we need, you know, the tower truck that we use for high buildings. But we did leave that meeting with the chief judge, talking about trying to get more grant money from the state and the federal government. Apparently, the rising cost of fire trucks is a problem nationwide, and it's being addressed potentially even in Washington, but he is looking at the grant money, too, to offset some of these costs. But it's a good question you asked, and like I said, we had a very spirited discussion on this.
And with that, are we ready for a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make the motion.
Hold on. Let me read it. It resolves by the Village Council of the Village of Ridgewood, the Village Council meeting closed session on November 12, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the matter on the agenda can be reached. And the set closed session be held in the coffee room on the fourth floor of the Ridgewood Village Hall, 131 North Maple Avenue, Ridgewood, New Jersey. And be it further resolved that the matters to be discussed in closed session are limited to legal matters, to include easement at 535 East Ridgewood Avenue. These matters are allowable under NJSA 1004-12 at second. Be it further resolved that the minutes of this meeting shall be made available to the general public. One touch matters have been deemed completed by resolution of the Village Council. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.